Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three Select Board Meeting. May I have a roll call, please, Ms. Wertz? But we can't hear you. Thank you.
Someday, I'll remember that. Um, here tonight is Mr. Alan Slaven, Ms. Judith Whiteside, myself, Tricia Wertz. Um, the town administrator, Mr. Sullivan, is here. Um, absent is, um, Ron Bessie, selectman, Jared Chadwick, selectman, and our, um, lawyer is also not here.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Slaven, would you do the honors, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
To the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements, Mr. Slaven?
Um, the Wareham Fire and Water District had their annual meeting yesterday. Probably ninety percent of the people had no clue that was happening. Uh, a total of seventy-five people showed up. And I would say at least fifty were, maybe to sixty were actually somehow employed or had county members that were involved with the district itself. Um, everything passed except one item. And that's one piece. Now, this Saturday is the election for, I think it may be one or two seats up on the, uh, because I think there's probably one seat up on the Water District and one seat up on the Presidential Committee for the District. Uh, the voting will take place at the, uh, Water Department on Route twenty-eight. And, uh, the timeframe, excuse me, is from ten in the morning till four in the afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wertz?
Um, I do not have any announcements. Um, I do have a question about the one that you just made, Mr. Salt Sl- Slaven. Do they, um, videotape that meeting?
Uh, WCTV was there filming, so they should be.
They were filming, okay. Um, other than that, I would just say this week I was involved in a, um, town get-together, really, called by, um, the planning board and to start, um, discussing, um, the design and look of Wareham Village. I thought it had a very interesting capable group there, and it's nice to see that work starting to move in that direction.
Thank you. I just have a couple of announcements. On Saturday, April fifteenth, at one P. M. in the Wareham High School, the Wareham Minutemen and Militia Company is doing a Revolutionary War reenactment and fashion show. Um, it is free, and they will be highlighting people from the town of Wareham who served in the Revolution War, Revolutionary War. And there were many of them, um, including one of George Washington's aides de camp. On Monday, April seventeenth, at seven P. M. at the Methodist Meeting House at four ninety-five Main Street, Wareham Historical, um, Commission will hold a program called "The History of Nineteen-Fifties Main Street." That ought to be kind of interesting. The record will show that Mr. Bessie joined the meeting at seven oh three. Thank you. Um, and I also have one other announce, um, Mr. Bessie, do you have any announcements?
Uh, no, I have no announcements tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. The other, um, announcement is that I wish all of the people who are of Eastern or Orthodox Catholics, uh, their, um, Happy Easter this coming weekend. And we'll go to licenses and permits. Mr. White, would you please let in, let's see? Suzanne Burke, raise your hand. Tim Richmond, raise your hand. Joseph Garen, please raise your hand. Thank you. Mr. White, we'll take Mr. Garen, I guess. Well, yeah, Mr. Garen, please. Mr. Garen, can you identify yourself, please, for the record?
My name is Jonah Garen. I am the event manager with the Buzzards Bay Coalition, here to talk about the Watershed Ride.
Wonderful. Could you let us know what your application is for, please?
Sure. So we are running the, um, annual Buzzards Bay Watershed Ride, which is a, uh, bike event, which goes from Little Compton in Rhode Island down to Woods Hole. And it just passes through the public roads of Wareham, um, so no road closures, um, just use of public roads on, uh, Sunday, October first, from around noon to four P. M.
Thank you. Any questions from any of my members? Mr. Slaven?
Uh, just a quick question. On this particular setup, I noticed that we did not get an insurance binder. We get a, a form that says that you're not going to hold the town, you know, liable for any accidents, et cetera. But unfortunately, in the real world, if someone had an accident on one of our roads during the event, we could be held liable as well. So I'm using the word assume, which is not a good word, that you have an insurance binder for the event as it is. And if so, you need to send us a copy when it's convenient, showing us it's also being covered.
Absolutely, I can send that over.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Ms. Wertz, I'll accept a motion.
Make a motion that we grant the application from Buzzards Bay Coalition, Coalition, care of Jonah Garen, um, to use the streets of the town for the Buzzards Bay Coalition Watershed Ride, taking place on Sunday, October first, two thousand and twenty-three, from twelve to four P. M.
Second.
Second.
Been made and seconded to grant the, um, application. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four zero zero. Let the record show that Mr. Bowen joined us at seven oh five, we'll call it. And thank you, Mr. Garen. Um, you can pick that up probably not until the middle of next week, or we can mail it to you. Um, and we would need a copy of your insurance binder for that one particular day naming the town.
Sure.
Okay, thanks so much. Good evening. Mr. Richmond, could you identify yourself and speak to us about the app?
Oh, hi, folks. Hi, folks, Tim Richmond, um, with Max Performance. We are, um, proposing the annual, uh, triathlon at eighty Makepeace on Sunday, June eleventh. Um, we're excited to bring back the event again, and we'd like to thank, um, a lot of the members of town departments from Police, Fire, uh, EMS, Department of Natural Resources, and the Harbor Master for helping us, uh, execute a new style of, uh, bike course, which really helped us reduce some congestion and traffic, um, previously in Wareham Crossing. So we'd like to thank everyone and their efforts for that. But, um, you know, we're just excited to be back again, and, um, I'm happy to answer any questions about the triathlon, uh, again, Sunday, June eleventh.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven?
Yeah, good to see you again. It's been a while.
You as well, sir.
Uh, it's a great event, especially with most of it is off-site, you know, over at eighty Makepeace. Uh, so you'll be using some of our roads for the bike course, I assume. Could be the same thing I mentioned to, uh, the Coalition with the binder.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Good luck. I hope you have a great event.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Richmond? No, then I will accept a motion, Ms. Wertz.
We, I make a motion to approve the application from Max Performance, care of Tim Richmond from Reading, Mass., for the use of town roads for the Harvest Triathlon Bike Course, taking place Sunday, June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, from seven thirty A. M. to eleven A. M.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion? We understand that the insurance binder will be forthcoming. Yeah, thank you. Um, hearing no further discussion, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero zero. It is granted. And then now I'm looking for Suzanne Burke. Could you raise your hand, please? Having a little bit of, um, difficulty tonight. I've already been knocked out of this meeting once, so we'll see what else happens.
Yes. Just has to unmute herself.
I don't see. Oh, there she is.
Okay.
Hi, Suzanne, could you identify yourself for the record, please?
She muted herself again.
We can't hear you, Suzanne.
How's that?
That's better. Thank you. Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
My name is Suzanne Burke. I'm from Parker Beach Association, and, um, we are here to request permission to have a parade to celebrate our one-hundredth birthday of our association. So we're calling it the Centennial Parade, and we would like to start from um, the clubhouse in the playground area of Cypress Street. And we're going to head down to Cypress, the east side of Cypress, and go around the drive up to Forest Street. I will have a police officer. I did speak with Lieutenant Gerard, and we are waiting for our certificate of liability to be here tomorrow.
Thank you. Do any of you have any questions of Mr. Slaven?
Uh, Suzanne, nice to hear from you. Uh, I know that myself and several of the club members are going to bring some classic cars for the parade. Um, check and see whether your insurance company, whether or not, uh, we have to have something as well to cover ourselves in the parade as well, if you couldn't get back to us.
Okay.
Just a question, you never know.
No, I want to, yeah, thank you. I want to make sure everything's done correctly, I think.
Well, you know, you have, you have old cars, and throttle could stick, and the car could go flying off into the water or wipe out a whole bunch of people. Who knows? Hope not.
I hope not.
Are there any further questions or comments from my board? Hearing none, Ms. Wertz, I will accept a motion, please.
I make a motion that we approve the application from Parkwood Beach Association, care of Suzanne Burke of Wareham, Mass., for use of town roads for the Centennial Parade, taking place on Saturday, July fifteenth, from eight A. M. to ten A. M.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Um, I will note that all of the application in information is on file, and they did provide a uh, route, and they did talk with the police officers, so that's all set.
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, the parade won't start until ten. What time does it have?
We have eight A. M. to ten A. M. here on the application.
So I have a little time till eleven and start by eleven thirty.
Hang on a second, please.
Thank you.
We have it as eight A. M. to ten A. M. on your application. So you want to change it to what, please?
I have the event ends at eleven fifteen.
Okay, and you have a rain date of Sunday, July sixteenth, is that correct?
Correct.
Um, Ms. Wertz, may I have you amend your motion to include the rain date, please, and change the hour to eleven thirty? We'll call it eleven thirty.
Thank you.
Okay.
I, I amend my, um, request to approve the application for Parkwood Beach Association, care of Suzanne Burke, Wareham Mass., for the use of town roads for a Centennial Parade, taking place on July fifteenth from eight A. M. to eleven fifteen.
Eleven thirty.
Eleven, eleven thirty.
Yeah.
Eleven thirty with a rain date of Sunday, July sixteenth.
Thanks. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is approved. Suzanne, it won't, the documentation won't be ready until next week sometime. Um, we'll give you a call when it's ready, okay?
Oh, thank you very much. Have a nice
Thank you. Have a nice night.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye. Is Sheila McDonough or her representative in the audience, please raise your hand? Okay. Um, next on the agenda then is a discussion and the possible vote regarding the FERC license. We heard some information a while ago from, um, a specialist, really, in terms of regulatory licenses. Um, I think we've had time to think about the ramifications of having to either um, protect the license or, uh, surrender the license, but both of those actions require that we take um, the opportunity to do the assessments that are required on an annual basis. So unless anyone has any further comments or questions, I will accept a motion.
Um, I make a motion to recommend we follow the W R A requirement to protect the FERC license. So that's
Yeah, not quite right.
Um, okay, let's try it all over again.
Okay, go ahead, Alan.
Hmm, no, I think it's just to go ahead and, uh, follow through on the FERC license to keep it in effect. I think it's what you're looking for.
Right, but the money's going to be coming from the W R A.
Not a chance. There's, there's no proof that it's going to come from the W R A. There hasn't been a vote on it.
I understand that. It's on their agenda.
So I don't know what the I don't know what this vote is.
Okay.
I would recommend that we hold this off to another meeting till we have a, a funding, you know, figure it out exactly, because we'll have to go back and forth a couple of times if that's, something goes wrong there.
Okay, then um, I believe that the W R A was looking for a recommendation from the Select Board that says that we understand the ramifications of having to either protect it or surrender it in terms of the monetary requirements, but we'll, we'll hold it off.
Thank you.
All right, um, I have no forty-eight-hour business, and we're not going to do any of the town meeting warrant stuff until we have heard from Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan, how are you this evening?
Um, well, yourself?
Just ducky, thank you.
Okay, um, I know we've got a, uh, big exec, you know, session a little bit later on, but I do have the budget information if you want to go over that tonight.
Yes, please. Would you like Ms. Alan England in the meeting now, or do you want to have her wait? Doesn't matter to me.
You can bring her in. She can wait. It's whatever.
It's up to, if Ms. Alan England, if you choose to come into the meeting, just raise your hand. Thanks. Go ahead, Mr. Sullivan.
Which, um, are you seeing the presentation? Because what I see on my screen, I've got two screens, so.
We have this town seal, and it says Town of Wareham Fiscal Twenty-four Budget.
Okay, perfect. Almost like we know, know what we're doing. Yeah. So this is, this filed a similar format that you'll see every year. So let's see how we go for it on this one. There we go. So for some of you, this, this might be a new process, so I'll go over a little bit more in depth. How you get your, uh, fiscal year twenty-four levy limit, which is up here in the left-hand corner, is you take the prior year's levy limit, which is forty-six million, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars. That does not include the, uh, debt exclusion numbers, just so everybody understands, because that does not get increased by Proposition Two and a Half. So it's just your regular levy base, and then you increase that by two and a half percent. And that's your new revenue from taxes outside of new growth for the year. Uh, you know, it's, uh, it's a little interesting when you see one point one seven million that can get eaten up by, um, you know, just, uh, benefits, just if we have a big health insurance year or something else, or from some of the state aid or a state assessment some years. Um, this year I'll go over, we, we had a little bit, uh, we've had some favorable things, so, but that's just, uh, you know, so when, um, you think about it, so if the, you know, the town's budget and the school's budget together is, you know, call it, uh, four, forty-seven million. Well, that's, uh, you know, you've almost got, that's what the town and, and the school could really split in a year. Then you get the estimated new growth, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand. So that's a, that's a safe estimate. That's new houses, new commercial, uh, things like that being brought online. In the past, it was solar, uh, as well, but solar now is a, uh, going forward, the, the D O R has it treated as a, uh, local receipt. But, um, you know, four hundred and fifty thousand, it's, it's a decent amount. We've been lower than three hundred before. Um, in the sort of boom years of the early, early two thousands from that, uh, Wareham saw, you actually were getting between seven and nine hundred thousand a year. So, uh, tho- those were some pretty good years for growth, but we won't be seeing that without, uh, without sort of a me- mega project anytime soon. Uh, so that probably, when you look at it, the, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand probably represents honestly about four hundred and fifty million dollars of, uh, of, uh, of new growth, of valuations. And when you think about a, uh, four-point, I think we're about four-point-four, uh, billion in valuation for all the properties within the town. But, um, so, yeah, that's, uh, excuse me, forty-five million for, uh, to get about four hundred and fifty thousand if we've got a just under a ten percent, uh, tax rate. Uh, debt exclusion gets added to that number. Again, that's a constant. That's an in, in and out. And, um, so the new, and we'll go over this later, you'll see there's a large increase in state aid, uh, Chapter Seventy. Charter schools went down about six hundred thousand, the reimbursement. State aid for the general government was pretty, uh, was pretty light. And then local receipts went up, uh, went up a little bit on there. Um, don't have my printout with me. I could go more exact. We can do that a little bit later, just to go over everything. This is sort of the high, high level of it. So, um, when you get, when you add those all together and, uh, from available funds, the Enterprise Fund Direct Cost Transfer, that's for three years in a row. It's, it's gone lower. Um, we have, uh, seventy-eight million, six hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars, and that's the revenue for the town. So this shows you from one year to the, uh, the other. Um, this should really say the, uh, F Y twenty, in the upper left-hand corner, should say F Y twenty-four tax levy. That should be twenty-three, but the numbers work. This is what you saw in the F Y, uh, twenty-three versus F Y twenty-four. So that's the two and a half percent increase plus the new growth. Uh, that's the difference, uh, between the, excuse me, the two years. There's a difference between new, uh, the two and a half from, uh, one year over the other. So just so people understand, you're, you're getting that, uh, two and a half. Uh, so that's sort of your base of getting new revenues every year, and that really only increases by, above what you received the other, by, you know, call it forty-two thousand or so. So it's, um, you know, we're welcome. We're, we're very thankful to be able to get that revenue. Um, not the, but, uh, not a huge change. The debt exclusion, there's, uh, really differences. There's still something that needs to be permanently financed. So this twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighteen, it represents it, the short-term interest, uh, estimated new growth. Our actual last year was almost five hundred and fifty-one thousand. But taking an average of the years, four hundred and fifty thousand is a safe bet. Uh, this is where you can see the big jump, the state aid, Chapter Seventy, and charter school. It's up almost two million. So while Chapter Seventy went up higher, um, by almost two-point-five million, again, the charter school reimbursement went down. This is the new state aid, uh, nine, almost ninety-five thousand for the general government. Local receipts have been trending, uh, favorably in some sections, so this was a, a decent year to, to bring them up a little bit. There's some years that you will see your, uh, local receipts go down, especially, um, one of the biggest drivers. In fact, the biggest driver is our auto excise. So, and when commie starts going down and people start keeping their cars longer, and the valuations go down, you can actually see your excise, uh, taxes, uh, reduced. So think about it as almost a, uh, a, a, a trough in a crest of a wave when it, so we're riding pretty well. But I think we're, uh, we're, we're cresting, so I would see that be, uh, stagnating in the future. Available funds, you're going to see a big jump in that this year, the three hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred. That's actually not new revenue. Uh, every year we do the, uh, we do the, the borrowing articles as separate articles for community preservation, things that have already been proved, uh, approved, and, um, the harbor service permits, uh, the things for D N R that have already been approved. So they really should, should just be added as the budget. Why, why keep on doing all these separate articles? Because you need to, you need to pay them. And I think it's a, it's a way to keep things, uh, keep things going. So, again, this year was a pretty favorable year if you look at the, uh, the available revenues. Uh, so this also, part of this here in F Y twenty-three was updated with, uh, the, the cherry sheets, if you remember. Uh, anytime we vote the budget in May, you won't have the final cherry sheet number sometimes until August. Uh, usually you receive the governor's, uh, uh, the budget back in January, and we didn't get that till, uh, till approximately March sometimes. So it's been, uh, things are a little off-kilter, and that makes sense, new administration, and things can take a little longer. Uh, just give me as the, the percentage-wise, when you look at it, so taxes cover about, uh, between the levy limit and the two and a half percent, new growth about sixty-two percent. Um, you know, when you really look at this, state aid, the general government, and the, the, uh, state aid for Chapter Seventy and Charter, twenty-six percent of our revenue comes from state aid. So that is over one quarter of our revenue budget is aid. So just so people under, understand, um, those available funds, we went over less than one percent. Last year, local receipts are at nine percent, and, uh, you know, the Enterprise Fund, the, the direct, uh, direct and direct cost transfer is right around one percent as well. Any questions so far? Okay. So what makes up, um, our expense summary? Well, we call the recap sheet items. Those are, uh, those are usually the state assessments. So we have the tuitions assessments, which are the charter school and the school choice sending, about four, a little over four-point-three million. Retired teachers' health insurance, about one-point-four million. You'll see the health insurance line later. Um, just so you know, the, the teachers don't go through Plymouth County. They go to the G I C for their retired health insurance. Then you have the other state assessments. That's like our, basically our GATRA assessments, um, it's mosquito control and a, and a few other smaller ones. Overlay for two, you see for two hundred and fifty thousand, that is, uh, basically a reduction in our, uh, in our tax revenue. So in case somebody, uh, abatements are filed and there's a reduction in tax, you always have those. This used to run about four hundred thousand a year, um, because the, the uh, Division of Local Services used to keep each year as a separate item. Uh, so, you know, twenty fourteen, your overlay, if you had an extra hundred thousand dollars in there, and in twenty fifteen, you were a hundred thousand dollars short, well, you couldn't use them. They weren't pooled together. They changed that over the last few years, which means that we don't have to put as much as you start building up a little bit of a, uh, little bit of a surplus, which I believe when it comes for the, uh, the next major revow, they'll be looking to use some of those, those funds. So that's a, it's a good use for those. Health and dental insurance, we're part of the Mayflower Municipal Health Group. Uh, you know, we've, we've been doing pretty well from zeros to twos. I think last year was a three. We're at a four and a half percent this year, which is, you know, it's right in line with what we're seeing, uh, elsewhere. I've seen seven percents and higher in some other communities. I've seen one that went at four percent, so, uh, we're doing pretty good there. But when you think about our, our budget, uh, eight-point-six million, that's a, that's a substantial sum. Then retirement and layuna, retirement is the Plymouth County, um, retirement, so that's, you know, uh, police to general government, um, municipal maintenance, water pollution control, and, um, non-teachers in the, in the schools. So that's where they're paid out of there as well. Um, general insurance and workers' comp insurance, it's been a big jump for us. Um, new school, that's where you're going to see a transfer later on. New schools approximately ninety thousand. Um new school, that's where you're gonna see a transfer later on. New schools approximately ninety thousand. Uh it was about a ninety thousand dollar uh cost increase, which makes sense. I mean, it's a it's an almost eighty million dollar structure. So ensuring that been, hasn't been depreciated at all. So uh Medicare is what you, the one point four or five percent as employers, we pay for the, if you will, um Medicare tax on behalf of employees. Life insurance is the small life insurance that we pay. It's, I believe it's a fifty fifty split with the uh with the employees and uh, you know, that's uh, it's a ten thousand dollar one when you're active and I think five thousand when you uh retire. So veterans benefits, this pays uh two things. One, it pays for the consortium that we're a part of, the the Cape uh, the veterans. So we actually have our veteran services through there. Uh veteran agents twice come come twice a week for all day over at the uh multi-service center to serve our veterans, help them with the, with their needs. And uh we pay right around thirty thousand dollars a year to be part of that. And it's actually, it's a great benefit cause it's based out of Hyannis. So our folks on the other days can reach out to Hyannis. There's there's always somebody available and they do in-person meetings. It also pays the benefits that we pay to veterans within our community. So uh that's uh, you know, proxy runs between three hundred and three hundred and seventy thousand a year. We get reimbursed seventy five percent of that from the Commonwealth. You know, I think that's uh probably one of the, one of the few few costs I'd never begrudge. So it's well worth it. I've included the uh excluded debt principal, interest and short term insurance on this line. Then you'll see the debt principal. So that's for the new school, the excluded debt. Debt principal, interest and short term uh interest on the next line. That's uh, we have one, one thing falling off for about uh a hundred and twenty five thousand in principal and I think about eight, eight or nine thousand and and interest is the last year, FY twenty four will be the last year of payment. And then the other cost in that is what um projecting for the middle school roof cost. So on a ten year, ten year bond with a net interest credit about three point uh five percent. So that's where you'll see later on a large jump in that. And that's why I want you to know. Um that's including the one point five million that's already been approved, plus what would be, hope it would be approved at this uh, this town meeting. Um if you remember, I talked about the uh debt that we were bringing on board for the uh community preservation, harbor service permits, that's these two lines. And then SERPET is our, is our regional planning authority. So all those together is just under nineteen point, well, it's nineteen point six eight million. Um school budgets broken down to two sections, which would be uh the the regular school budget and then transportation. So it's a net and non-net school spending. But uh let's see, we're now at uh thirty three point five million for them. The biggest increase wasn't in school transportation, which has been a, which has been uh you know, it's had to jump these last few years with uh the inflationary pressures of fuel. Also the cost of trying to find C D L drivers and uh and such, and having to some of the routes being uh added for out of district as well. Uh Upper Cape Cod Tech Regional Technical Budget uh didn't go up too much this year. So about three point three million and then general government fifteen point six million. So that brings you to the seventy eight million, six hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and eighty nine dollars. So what, excuse me, when you look at from one year to the other, um the benefits, big driver was health insurance and pension. Um general government, well, looks like a large percentage wise, it's just as uh the real drivers for that are, we've increased a a big chunk into the uh what do you call it? The the finance committee's reserve fund uh from fifty thousand to twenty five thousand. There's some good news in this budget. We've put into that as well, a uh help desk employee, which has been desperately needed over at the uh, in the I T department. That's especially going to be helpful as we're implementing, putting some new new computer desktops in and making sure the ones that are actually running the the whole department aren't coming for um Excel printer questions, things such as that. So it the, it hasn't been a good use of our our funding to bring our our I T director in and uh some of the other, the the other staff and for those types of questions. Uh you also the assistant, uh well, the cl- the clerk position in the uh town clerk's office. So you have the town clerk, assistant town clerk, and then the clerical position. That's been traditionally part time. We've uh, we've been able to move that to uh full time in this budget. So that's been uh some real benefits, which are going to keep operations going. Um cultural and and recreation, I have the um the breakdown for there, but I'll go over that later. But school, you can see the uh, those are the four point six seven percent that they've um that they had requested after their um I think they've gone, they went through two rounds of cuts and were able to bring it to that level. Upper Cape Cod Tech, less than a uh, less than ninety five thousand increase. Public safety, which is police inspectional services. Um that's uh, that's uh three hundred and sixty nine thousand. Public Works is municipal maintenance department, the uh snow and ice, streetlight budgets. Health and Human Services, eh the debt service is the one I want to talk to you about again. You see that major increase. That's for the uh, for the future debt service. New school debt, the the small, just under twenty nine thousand dollars. And uh state and county assessments, that's the lowest state and county assessment increase that I've seen in in many years. Um just for instance, when you see that at uh the six point the four seven, so almost six point five million. I believe in two thousand twelve or fiscal twelve, our assessments were two million, forty five thousand. So in about ten, eleven years, they they've almost uh, it hasn't tripled, but it's it's been a, it's been a huge increase. So where does the money go? This is one of the ones, just trying to relate it to a dollar bill for folks. This is how you see it. Um I think this kind of helps break down the, what you see. This is the school portion, school and town employee benefits. Um public safety, state and county assessments. Upper Cape Cod Tech, new school debt, debt service, public works, health and human services, cultural, general government. So um you know, it's uh, it certainly certainly gives you a good idea of what you're uh, what you're looking at. Any questions so far? Okay, I should continue. So again, then just to copy what um Mr. Forget said, pie charts in a budget presentation are status quo. So um when you're looking at it, the uh the schools forty three percent, Upper Cape Cod Tech, four percent. Our D P W, so Public Works, only four, uh only four percent as well. Public Safety is about ten percent. Health and Human Service, the new school debt, you know, it's debt service, state and county. School and town employee benefits, um general government. Five percent of the budget, which you know, I've always found in- interesting. That's administration, selectmen, town meeting, um elections. That's the I T departments. Treasure collecting department, assessing department. Uh planning department, zoning conservation in there. Uh the finance committee, including finance reserve. So this is uh, this is the majority of our town, non-public safety or municipal maintenance uh go, budget is is uh is five percent. So pretty interesting when we, you think about that for just the uh, the breakdown. Um so net state aid, so this is just helping to explain. So I went from twenty thirteen on. So we're twelve point six million uh in twenty thirteen. That was pretty stagnant or reducing, which you can see was a, was really a tough shot to go through this whole time. And then this year, twenty twenty four is the first major increase that we've, we've seen in eleven years. So that's been uh, you know, that's one of the reasons we've been able to do the uh providing the the funds to the school department and the uh doing that new school roof is the uh, is the new state aid revenues that we've received. My total estimate state assessment. So yeah, going back to about twenty thirteen, two million, forty three thousand. And you just uh, sorry, you look how it's climbed the whole whole way, slight dip in twenty twenty one, and it's just been, been massive. My, my you, you gotta hope at some point we've uh we've reached a saturation point, if you will, because the the major driver of that was, has been school choice and charter school. So um Upper Cape Cod Tech, i- it's increased over the years as well. Seeing some uh comments over here. Um but if you see, it's been uh, you know, we had there was a time FY twenty one, we had the major increase because of a, basically a bunch of our students increased there and some of the other surrounding communities went down. And we've been sort of on the uh other spectrum for for a little bit. So uh I usually fa- try and figure out from the October school enrollment what we're looking at for the uh next year. This year, I believe we had nine new students that that went there. So with the increase in the nine new. But uh Mr. Forget does an incredible job explaining of how the uh with the state aid and then the other, other options, it's cheaper for us to send our students to Upper Cape Cod Tech than other communities. So um this is one of the interesting ones. So I'm gonna go just from left to right to help explain it. So this is our FY twenty three average single family tax bill, the town of Wareham, three thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Um that is number twenty five in the Commonwealth. As in the twenty fifth lowest uh average single family tax bill in the Commonwealth. Uh but to be fair, what you need to do is bring in the districts. So when you bring the um Wareham fire, you're looking uh district that brings up to four thousand, five hundred and forty eight dollars, the average single family tax bill. When you bring in onset fire, it's four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Makes sense for onset, they're pulling from a smaller pool of um of levy base. So they'd probably, so you'd be charged a little bit more for the operations.
Excuse me, Mr. Sullivan, one second. Mr. White, would you let Mr. Bessie back in? He was kicked out. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Sullivan. Go ahead.
Um so you start going through some of the other communities, you see Falmouth, you know, uh under six hundred dollar difference, so forth, so on. Going to uh some of the others, the the states is uh average single family tax bill, seven, seven thousand, fifty six. Westons is about twenty two thousand on the other, other side. So I mean, that's our average. So tells you what they're looking at. Then Marion um that's uh, I won't, I won't speak ill of our neighbors. It's just a good chunk of change there. So so why does this matter? You know, cause well, what you hear is the tax rate all the time and that's what people, you can't take that into uh really consideration, cause it's not I hate the term not fair, but it's not an actual representation. For example, in Chatham, if your average single family home is worth one and a half million or a million dollars, you're gonna have a five dollar tax rate. You know, so that's just uh, so what everybody uses is the average single family tax bill. So why does it matter? This is something that we ta- that I do every year. Kind of gives you, gives you a little bit of an idea. This is not, this is not exact, it's, but it's a if it's a reference point. So the first thing you do is you take the average single family tax bill from uh one of the neighboring communities. You take the Wareham's, the town's tax bill with the onset fire on there, cause that's the higher one. And then you've got the uh, you've got the difference, right? So the, the delta. So born, the the difference between us and Born is eight hundred and seventy nine dollars. So then what I do is take the Wareham single family parcels, which are nine thousand, four hundred and eighty nine. So I multiply the eight seventy nine times to nine thousand, four hundred and eighty nine. Which tells you what our revenue would be if our average single family tax bill were, were higher. Were the same amount as Born. So it'd be about eight point three million in new revenue, if we had the same as Born. Carver, twenty point three, almost twenty point four million. Um Falmouth, five point nine. Lakeville, eight point seven. Mattapoisett, twenty six point one. Uh Middleborough, fourteen point two. Uh Plymouth, twenty point three. Rochester, fourteen point six. I didn't put Marion in there, cause it'd just make us sad. So you know, um you know, this isn't, this isn't crying about anything. It's just giving people a perspective, cause I had I had somebody um come and say, well, Plymouth was upgrading roads and we have a road grader and you should be, you should do it. And I, and I wanna know what the difference between us and uh, you know Plymouth is. And I explained to her that Plymouth's m- maintenance, their their highway budget was bigger than our entire D P W budget. So the, including all town buildings, including every single thing. So uh I I just don't think people sometimes get it as a, as an apples to apples comparison. So you know, what could we do with an extra eight point three million or five point nine or twenty six million? I don't, I don't, I don't know what we could do with twenty six, you know, it's, but uh you know, so that's just uh giving you sort of a, a background.
Thank you. Um do any of you have any questions or comments? Thank you.
So um I will mail that out to you, will put it on the town website. I've already presented this to the finance committee. So excuse my uh lack of decorum in presenting to them first, but uh the timing of it. So it's the um I, we've got the uh the budgets for the uh individual departments as well. So I'll send that along and if you have any questions, I'd, I'd be happy to to go over it. So do you think you, you need anything else on this?
I don't. Mr. Slaven, Mr. Miss Wirths, Mr. Bessie?
Just increase in salary would be great.
Well, he's already given me mine. So you know.
The selectman's salary this year.
Yeah. Just for clarification, the selectmen do not get paid one dime, not one. So the salaries that you see are the department staff. Anyway, anything else, Mr. Sullivan, on your report?
Um I have just a, I have some of the other items, but you wanna, I'll email them to you so you can have them to go over for questions may next week, if that's your, your preference.
I think that would be helpful. Yeah, we'll, we'll get it on the agenda for next week. Thank you. Anything else, sir?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Um liaison initiative reports, boards comments, Mr. Bessie?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven?
Uh I'll be meeting on Monday with Eversource, the article that Wareham, we printed out today. Must have got somebody in the uh public relations department that Eversource a little cranky. So they wanna meet with me uh on Monday to talk about the utility polls and give us a better idea. They're probably gonna try and blame the uh telephone company instead of themselves, but we'll see how, what happens there. I also have a meeting uh tomorrow uh with uh basically Landers and Mast D O T hundred six and twenty eight to go over where we are. And just to remind everybody that things are close. Not everything's completely done yet, but please remember that the actual file top coat has not been done yet for the road. The top coat is a minimum of an inch and a half of new asphalt. So when that's done, you'll probably have a overly smooth highway for at least five to ten years. So So thank you, everybody, for their patience. It's, it's come out really well, the turnarounds and extra lighting, except it looks like it's going to work well. Utility license, they're putting as well, lighting up the highway will be quite a bit of benefit as well. So thank you for being patient with us.
Thank you. Ms. Wertz? Guess what?
You're muted.
You're muted.
It's two.
Story of my life, maybe that's the way I work best. I don't have anything right now. Thank you.
I just want to let people know that there's a fabulous display of artistic achievement in the library. The annual peeps contest, there's really, really clever presentations and they have extended the time that the show is on until through the 13th. So if you haven't seen the peep show, it's, some of it is really very funny and most of them are just, well, they're all great. They're all, they're all really fun. And peeps are, you know, you eat them at Easter and then you hate them for the rest of the year, I think. Anyway. We have no, we have no bills or minutes or anything like that. So we are going to be going into executive session and I'll accept a motion in a moment. We will be dismissing ourselves or we will be adjourning the meeting from the executive session. We will not be coming back into open session. So Mr. White, I would ask that you remove everyone and Ms. Alan England, who's the individual that we should be with you? Could, could that person raise his or her hand? I don't know who it is.
Joseph Raymond?
Joseph, Joseph Raymond, could you raise your hand, please? Thank you so much. So let Mr. Raymond into the meeting, please, Mr. White, and I will now accept a motion, please.
I make a motion that we go into executive session meeting. Do you want me to continue it for point A?
Yes, please.
Yeah. For Mass, for MGL 30A, chapter 21, for reason three, to discuss the litigation of Marie Chikotelli.
And the second one?
Same, if we're doing it simultaneously, yes. And also in executive session for MGL 30A, section 21, part three, to discuss union contracts.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
The, the contracts that we will be talking about are listed on the agenda. Is there any further discussion on the motion to go into executive session? Here and now, I will go for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
So Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes. We will take a five-minute break. The people who will be left in the meeting are Wertz, Whiteside, Slaven, Bessie, Alan England, Sullivan, Bowen and Mr. Raymond. The rest of the individuals attending the meeting, Mr. White should be dismissed. We will take a five-minute break. We will.